Today is Wednesday, January 12th, the time is 6:30 PM, and I am calling this meeting of the Macomb Township Board of Trustees to order. You will now say the pledge.
Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Kuzmato?
Here.
Trustee Lucido?
Here.
Trustee Oliver?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Treasurer Gillette?
Here.
Clerk Posey here, Supervisor Viviano?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Mr. Chairman, I have none at this time.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the agenda. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to approval of the bills. Do you have a motion? So move to approve.
Support.
Is there any discussion on the bill run?
Mr. Chairman, I have several questions, a few more than usual. I had a question regarding vendor number 10133, Dan Mordan. It was for an outlay for fall season contractor fees for $528. If someone could tell me what that was for.
Stacy?
Could you tell me the vendor name?
Dan Mordan, M-O-R-D-A-N.
Was this on the original list or commercial card? Do you know?
I believe the original list. Fall season contractor fees. And I apologize for not getting a question to you earlier. I just.
I can see that it's for a park and rec invoice, but I'd have to go to my office to find the actual detail on that particular invoice.
Thank you. You don't have to go to your office. Question on vendor number 10619, Harrison Harris Court reporting, three invoices totaling $2,831.62 for solar land versus Macomb Township. Why was this billed to the township and not through council?
It was part of our agreement with, it was Bodman at the time, and it was a bill we never paid in error. It was my offices there. We never submitted it to payables to be paid.
So it's not our current practice to pay litigation support fees for court reporters? It's, this is just an extraneous, unusual outlay, right?
It was, yeah. It was a holdover from that interim period.
Okay.
I believe it was in relation to the tax tribunal?
Tax tribunal, that's correct.
And the reason why I mention it is because it's my understanding that counsel, litigation counsel and general counsel acts as a check as to whether or not these bills were incurred. Fair statement, Mr. Townsley.
So I imagine the bill was originally sent to Bodman, and Bodman forwarded it to us. And I have a feeling that the reason why you received this later after the representation ended was due in fact because there was an appeal to the Court of Appeals, last minute filed, as a delayed application. So that's why it was outside the normal course.
Okay, that explains that. Question for engineering. Great Lakes Water Authority has an outlay of $994,710.61 for water charges. I understand that that's for our water supply. I wanted to know, is there a match up of the total units purchased and the total units sold to determine whether or not there's any discrepancy such as leakage in the system?
I think that's more a question for the water and sewer department. I don't get into the billing.
I apologize. You're correct. I forgot that Jerry's still here, so.
I could, I'm not prepared to answer this, obviously, but I can definitely give you the information tomorrow or Friday.
Is it possible that we're having leakage such as municipalities like the city of Detroit? That there's leakage going on in the system that we're not aware of?
If we had a leak, it would surface and we would fix it immediately, like we did today on Tower Drive. So I mean, I can't say it's impossible, but I think it's very, very unlikely.
But there's no check and balance to see what we're purchasing and what we're selling, number of units to see?
I can, I can do the comparisons for you and get back with you, yes.
I appreciate that. That's just a general question because this is fairly significant expense. Vendor 35898, Macomb County Department of Roads for road salt, 1778. The question is, is it for the parking lots around Township Hall? If not, where is the salt going?
Yeah, that's for all parking lots around all of the township facilities.
Okay. And, um, Macomb County Treasurer's Office, OMI, and MIDD charges for sewer treatment fees, $783,444. Is this payment or a portion of it for debt? Or is it all just the customer charge for volume of wastewater?
None of it was for debt. That's billed out separately.
That concludes my questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Kuzmato. Any more discussion on the bill run? Okay, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the bill run. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to approval of the previous meeting minutes from December 21st, 2021. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Any discussion? A motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the previous meeting minutes from December 21st, 2021. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Moving on to public comment. If anybody wishes to speak, please approach the microphone on the right-hand side of the room. If there's anyone who wishes to participate, who is joining us remotely, please digitally raise your hand. Anyone?
No comments.
The chair moved the consent agenda in its entirety.
Support. Any discussion on the consent items?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question on Agenda Item 5A. Invoice number 2021-34.
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Wanglin. I need you back at the lectern. My understanding is, is that there was an additional charge that was previously approved by the board, or in addition to what was previously approved by the board for gate valves not operating, and that there was downtime. The original price was $18,450. The new amended price is $24,980. The write-up indicates Purchasing Policy 4.4, which has since been repealed, I understand, and no longer exists. Why wasn't the covert work included in the original vote for authorization? Is this something that was unknown at the time we voted on the previous authorization?
Well, the covert work was done through the Department of Roads. The water main work was done through, through this body.
Okay. Was it, is my understanding is the addition was because the gate valves were not opening?
Yeah, there's two, there's two items there. We had gate valve trouble on the day the shutdown was planned for, which was not the contractor's fault. It was our fault. We had some valves that needed some attention. And then number two, we had a water service that needed to be relocated, which we didn't think was going to be the case when the original quote was approved back in April.
Okay. What was the reason why the vendor decided to discount the $42,250 for the day of downtime?
That was an objection on my part. And he was willing to work with us and waive the second day of downtime because there actually was two days of downtime. And I, he and I had a conversation and he relented.
A frank discussion?
There you go. Yes, sir.
Well, I'd like to, I would get up and hug you right now, but the COVID restrictions prevent me from doing so. So I thank you on behalf of the board.
Jerry's probably very appreciative of those restrictions.
He could blow him a kiss, Frank. I appreciate you driving a hard bargain and trying to get that savings for the taxpayers. Thank you, sir. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzmato. Any other discussion on the consent items? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the consent agenda. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right, on to new business. Item nine. We have the request to schedule a public hearing for an SAD, for the amended resolution for the Villas of Velagio condominiums for February 9th, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Van Tifflin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Board members, about a little over a year ago, this developer came in, asked the board to approve a resolution to establish a special assessment for street lighting within this development. Since then, the developer's changed his mind with regard to the entrance lighting. They want an additional light at the entrance. That changes the formula that DTE uses to charge us the annual lamp charge. So we need to amend the resolution to reflect that change. We've been working with legal counsel. We're ready at this point for the board to hold a public hearing to hopefully adopt that amended resolution. And this would be the date that the public hearing would be held.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tifflin. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the SAD, public hearing for the SAD for February 9th. Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Kuzmato?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, moving on to item 10. We have a request to approve an amended employment agreement. So move. Support. Mr. Tabaka?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board Members. HR is requesting to amend the terms of employment for the confidential assistant to the township supervisor. In December of 2020, the Board of Trustees approved an offer of employment that was enclosed, that enclosed the specific benefits. Some of those benefits, such as the township's health insurance offering, have already changed. The employment agreement submitted for approval will allow the compensation package for this nonrepresented position to remain consistent with the township employees. It is approved in the budget, and thank you for your consideration of this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have several questions. And my questions in no way reflect upon this employee, Beth Wheeler. Actually, all my dealings with her, she's been an excellent member of the team for the township to work with. However, I do have some concerns regarding the language of the resolution or the actual employment agreement, where it says the employer through its township supervisor can adjust the employee's annual salary. And paragraph two, the employer through the township supervisor may from time to time adjust certain offerings. And later in that paragraph, and again, these offerings are consistent with whatever benefit packages and wage scales are in it with the ASME Local 1917.43. And then the employer through its township supervisor may exercise in its sole discretion and adjust the employee's fringe benefits. My question, and I guess it would be to legal counsel through the chair, is, does this violate the Open Meetings Act in that the supervisor is making a decision as defined under the Open Meetings Act regarding an expenditure of public funds without a public meeting notice and without public comment?
Mr. Chairman, in my opinion, we're not violating the OMA if this board grants it authority, grants that authority at a public meeting, which is before it this evening. So going forward, I don't believe it's required to become before every time. There could be a potential change in the employment agreement or increase in compensation, unless this was done without a public meeting. But we're having a public meeting. If you grant him that authority or grant that position the authority to do so, you've complied with the OMA.
My question is, is why not just pass a policy resolution that the benefits and salaries are directly tied to the specified collective bargaining unit, rather than do it on an individual employee basis? And I guess the question I have is, what are the limits of the authority to delegate the ability to make those decisions? Are there any limits at all, or could we just give him authority to, the supervisor authority, just to do anything on behalf of the board? This has come up at the college on several occasions where I've questioned general counsel there about.
There are some inherent limitations about binding future boards and the like with a particular action. I'm not sure this would fall under one of those. And I'm going to be honest with you, Mr. Kuzmato. I didn't draft this employment agreement. This would have been drafted by our labor council. So given that they're, they're very competent in what they're doing and the amount of employment work they do, I would anticipate they've looked into that issue. Otherwise, would have limited, limited the scope of the supervisor in such an instance.
And I also understand that there is no term under this agreement. In other words, it's not year to year. It's, it's open. And I thought that that was problematic for Mr. Assorti in the litigation that he presented. Is that, did you have an opportunity to review this, Mr. Townlinsen?
This employment agreement?
I can, I can chime in there.
Yeah.
She, that position is specifically at-will. So there is no term in any at-will employment.
Okay.
But it's her, it's specified at-will in her offer letter that she signed. In addition, you know, that would go along with this, this particular agreement.
And that is, that is specifically provided for in the last paragraph, that it is an at-will employment.
Yeah, she's an at-will employee.
I think it's mentioned several times in the agreement. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm satisfied.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the amended employment agreement. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 11. We have a request to approve the general design plan for the Fremont PUD, Permanent Parcel 083510004, located in the southeast corner of 21 Mile Road and Card Roads in Section 35. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. Yes, the Fremont PUD, as you mentioned, is a development located in the southeast corner of 21 and Card. It's an undeveloped site at this time. What's before you tonight is a PUD agreement and a general design plan, which includes both a residential component with 41 units and a commercial component that would include such things as a gas station, a car wash, and an oil change facility. The project does also include some open space and walking pathways. And the attorney did work closely with this developer to craft the language in the PUD agreement, and we're very comfortable moving forward with it. And the planning commission recommended approval by unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Any questions? Okay, hearing no more discussion. We have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the general design plan for Fremont PUD, parcel ID 083510004. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is a request to approve the revised final plan for Wellington Estates, Permanent Parcel 081610024, located on the south side of 24 Mile Road, one quarter mile east of Romeo Plank in Section 16. Is there a motion?
So move.
Support.
Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. This is Wellington Estates. This is a revised final plan. This is a plan that's previously been through the board and approved. What changed on this plan is that the neighboring property had kind of a finger, if you will, that projected out of it that this developer has now acquired. And in doing that, they reconfigured a little bit on the southern portion of the property and have obtained three additional units by doing the reconfiguration. So there are 149 total units now. There were 146 on what was previously approved. And the planning commission did recommend approval by unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to approve the final, revised final plan for Wellington Estates on parcel ID 081610024. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 13 is a request to approve the final plan for Pheasant Run Phase 1, which is located on the south side of 25 Mile Road, west of Broughton Road, permanent parcel ID 0809126002. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. Pheasant Run is located just a little west of where we're sitting here this evening. You probably all drove by it on your way here. It's already under construction. They have a number of homes up front on 25 Mile, as well as into the neighborhood. What this plan includes is just a reconfiguration of a few lots further back into the neighborhood. They're removing a couple alleys, and the lots will now front on the neighborhood roadways as opposed to fronting on a park that's within the development. They did not gain any additional lots. They simply reorganized the layout of the development itself. We did have a town center committee meeting, and it was recommended unanimously for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Any discussion? Any questions? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the final plan for Pheasant Run Phase 1, located on the south side of 25 Mile Road, permanent parcels 0809126002. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 14. We have a request to schedule a public hearing for the establishment of an industrial development district for Unit 27 of the Regency Commerce Center. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board Members. The township is in receipt of a request for the establishment of an industrial development district. Their long-term goal is to establish a speculative building there. They are going to build on the site but have no tenant in mind. As such, in order to preserve the opportunity for a future client to obtain the tax abatement, they need a speculative building. And before they can do that, they have to have a district established. As there isn't one located there, they've submitted an application to us for that purpose. Once this is, should be approved, we would like to have the public hearing on the first meeting in February.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Oliver, schedule a public hearing for the establishment of an industrial development district for Unit 27 of the Regency Commerce Center. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 15. We have a request to adopt the 2022 Real Property Tax Property Exemption Guidelines Resolution. Is there a motion?
So move. Support.
Kemp?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, no.
Oh, Kim or Kemp?
Not Tim.
Would you like to do it?
Sorry.
Here you go.
I was ready to roll with it.
I should have used your last name. I apologize.
Mr. Chairman and Board Members, the assessing department is requesting the board to adopt the 2022 Real Property Tax Poverty Exemption Resolution and Guidelines to reflect the income levels and requirements applicants must provide for consideration of a poverty exemption. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Do have a question, if I may. Kemp, how many people applied and received the exemption in the most recent year?
In 2021, we had four total. One was approved and three were denied.
Okay. Thank you.
Just another follow-up. What do you need to get approved? Just a very low income?
You have to have a very low income. We take the federal poverty guidelines. We increase it by 1.35% to reflect more of Macomb Township's area. And then they are, so say a family of four could make no more than $35,775 a year. So they would have to fall within that parameter in order for them to apply to the board. And then they have to provide their taxes, their checks, anybody who contributes to the household. Their other information comes into play too. And then they have to address our board, and then they make that decision. And then it can only decrease either 25, 50, or 100%.
Okay. How long could they, could they just keep coming in every year?
They can keep coming in every year. They can reapply. However, they are usually asked if they are repeat people, what is their plan to get out of their situation? So they, just because they apply every year doesn't mean that they're necessarily granted one every year.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair? Go ahead.
Go ahead, Peter.
Just one quick question. In the notes, it says, change from last year, you're no longer allowed to deny a property owner to file, just to file, not to actually be accepted.
Right. What happened was we would get people who would come in with their property, they just bought a house, and as they're filing their property transfer affidavit and their home sit paper, they're asking us for a poverty exemption to not pay their taxes. So for a while, we, we had it in there that if you bought the house in 2021, you could not file for that exemption in 2021. You had to wait until 2022. Unless, they could file if there was an extenuating circumstance, then yes, the board would look at it. But the State Tax Commission no longer wants that in there, so we had to take it out.
Thank you.
Mr. Kuzmato?
Yes, my question is, there's a significant amount of documentation that's required of these individuals and families. Are they subject to FOIA? And has the board, to anyone's knowledge, done a FOIA resolution indicating that they be exempt from FOIA disclosure as an unwarranted invasion of privacy?
No one has ever requested. It is open meetings, so when they're, when they do come in, people are allowed to be in there. But we have always been very conscientious of taking care of their private information and keeping that private. No one has ever asked for it.
So it's under the Open Meetings Act, I understand?
Right.
I'm focusing on Freedom of Information Act and any documents and records?
I've never dealt with it, so I couldn't, I couldn't answer one.
If I, if I could ask Mr. Townlinsen, is that information, could it be made exempt from FOIA?
You'd have to look at it on a case-by-case basis. It'd be under the privacy exemption, as noted by Mr. Kuzmato. But we would look at the individual requests and determine what should be and shouldn't be redacted.
Does, Mr. Chairman, to general counsel through the chair, would that require some formal policy action by the board? Or is, can that be delegated to the reviewing employees of the township?
So typically, it's delegated to the clerk's office, the FOIA coordinator, who, who works with our office. who, who works with our office in reviewing what should and shouldn't be redacted, what should be provided on those type of circumstances. And that's on a case-by-case basis, we don't have a per se policy. We basically are following the dictates of the statute itself.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, that's with regards to all documents that have any type of personal information on them.
Okay, so their, their financial and their checking accounts?
All would be redacted.
How long does the clerk's office retain those records, if you know, I don't?
Under FOIA, it's a minimum, I believe, of one year.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
For purposes of a FOIA request.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido, to adopt the Real Property Tax Property Exemption Guidelines Resolution. Members, please vote. No, I'm sorry. Clerk Posey, call the roll.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Guzman?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. That resolution is adopted. Moving on to item 16, we have a request to adopt a resolution to amend the tax abatement standards for plant rehabilitation in industrial districts. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
So, Mr. Thompson, you did help with this one, can you tell us a little bit about what we did here?
I can, yes. So we had a, we had a request not too long, long ago to look at an industrial facilities exemption in a particular location. And initially, it appeared that we were not even addressing these and we weren't granting them. We looked back in the, the history in the archives and we in fact did find a policy that was somewhat dated. And I think it's right in the resolution, it goes back to 1991. And the administration decided to take a look at this, had some consultation with the, with the Macomb County Economic Development and discuss some parameters of what we should be looking at. And I think it was them that actually brought it to our attention that we should be looking at a policy or whether it's a policy to not accept them or changing a policy. Administration sat down, discussed what kind of parameters we were looking at. Did we want to require certain amounts of investment on a sliding scale and/or number of employees to be employed as provided by the current policy? Or if we wanted to be more across the board in granting these requests? Administration at that time decided that the policy would be up to nine years. And as long as the application set forth the certain parameters of being advantageous to the township, including increase in employment, investment in the community and the like, that they could apply for this industrial facilities exemption after establishing the district as we did previously or set a public hearing for the other one this evening. So we, this is the proposed resolution to adopt those standards, just by way of reference. The board could go up to a maximum of 12 years. But looking at it from a standpoint of we're opening up the parameters a little bit more, I think the administration felt that, in consultation with our office as well, that a lesser period of time was probably more warranted than automatic 12-year abatement.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Do you have comment, if I may, Mr. Chair?
You may.
Thank you. So I, I was, we were approached by the county economic development team to ask for clarification of our policy with regard to these abatements. I just want to note that I have a general opposition to treating different taxpayers differently. Especially, you know, what we're doing is granting potentially a 50% abatement to a new coming business while an established business does not get any sort of abatement. And is paying a different tax rate for the same valued property and so forth. So philosophically, I am opposed to these types of measures. But I am supporting this change from our current policy. So our current policy allows it for 12 years, but it has a very complicated formula involving how many employees you hire, how much money you invest, how many employees are Macomb Township employees, which is never monitored, and so forth. And I'm pleased that we moved in a much, or even-handed way of removing some of these stipulations and complexities of the formula and allowing small businesses, mid-sized businesses to have the same opportunity as larger businesses. Doesn't go as far as I'd like, but it's an improvement from the status quo. That's all I have to say, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, treasurer Gillette. Any other questions, discussion?
Question. This is limits to new company, new businesses moving in?
New construction.
New construction?
Yes.
So anyone established, like Mr. Gillette said, is not eligible?
Correct.
Pretty much not, that's by state law, they set the guidelines for the overall policy. Sorry for just barging in there.
Any other question is, what, what percentage of tax relief do they get?
50%.
50%. For, this would be for nine years?
This would be for nine years. And Mr. Thompson said we can approve up to 12 years and the old policy was very convoluted. And in, and in some cases, and parts of it were never ever tracked. And not just, you know, any, any community that had employment thresholds and things like that, they never, they never followed up and tracked them. So this, 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 even the playing field for anybody who was going to invest in our industrial areas, whether it was a small mom and pop business that wanted to build in there or a large company, everybody's going to play by the same rules.
Basically, any new business.
Any new business.
Any new business that meets the state criteria is an industrial facility.
Correct.
Right.
So it wouldn't be like a haircut place or, you know, it has to be an industrial facility.
And just for clarification, and this is obviously up to the board, but it could be a new business or it could be an existing business that brings on new construction to add on to an existing facility.
Correct, it's new, yeah, it's based on new.
When you say new construction, it's both new, new businesses and existing businesses.
Right. Right.
If I may add one more clarification. I apologize. Also, just to make note that we are not waiving 50% of our township taxes, which we would be doing, but we're also waiving 50% of taxes to the schools for the, you know, SMART, DIA, county.
Across the board.
It's across the board, 50%.
So I was of mind with treasurer Gillette on this when the first time we were approached with one and I think we both out of hand just said no. We have since learned from the county that we may have been a little hasty in making that decision that, that certain businesses looking to relocate weigh that pretty heavily. Even though our tax rate is lower than our surrounding neighbors, that it's something that people investing, you know, sometimes hundreds of millions of dollars in facilities will look strongly at this tax abatement. So in order to remain competitive, we debated strongly back and forth, arguing years and what to do. And I think we came to a, we believe was a fair approach to everybody that is going to be asking, would ask for an abatement.
Another question. So I get my abatement, I go nine years. I sell the building.
It runs with the property.
Okay. So there, it, it ends after?
Ends after nine years.
Okay. So I get it, I use it for three years and I move out? It still stays with the property?
Stays with the property.
So that new buyer can, can pick it up and take it and extend, and not extend it, but continue it to its ninth year?
Right. Now, one of the things, I, I had Mr. Box pull all the, the existing abatements that were in place in our surrounding communities and were, like, how many do we have, three?
I believe so, yeah.
And our neighbors had, the lowest amount was nine.
Some had?
20?
40, 50?
Yeah, so. You know, we, it just, it indicated to me that maybe we weren't being competitive to get these, you know, to, to spread out our tax base in, in the industrial zones.
If I may add. This was subject to a significant amount of discussion and debate, both philosophically, economically, between, you know, a number of us on the board debating, what is the ethical thing to do, what is the economically correct thing to do? What is the, you know, what's the best thing for the township? And, you know, I think what we ended up on was this particular plan is a compromise. Instead of 12 years, it'd be nine. And instead of restricting it to bigger businesses, it'd be smaller, medium. And I don't know that anybody's perfectly happy with exactly what it is, I know I'm not, but I think it's an improvement from the status quo. And I think it's fairer than the status quo. And that's why I'm supporting it.
There's just one, I guess, one more clarification. This is our policy, but when any individual, this is, I guess, for Tim to clarify, any individual business approaches us and requests one, it still comes before the board and we still have to approve it.
That's correct, each one comes before you and you're going to, well, hopefully in their petition, they'll address the specifics that we outline in our policy of what we're looking for.
Just wanted to make sure everyone understood that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just chime in on the philosophical bent on this. It is in fact picking winners and losers. It's giving a competitive edge to these businesses over existing businesses who do still provide employment opportunities for residents as does the new business. So either on a local level, state level, and even on a national level, there's this competition going on. And you've heard about Boeing moving plants down to South Carolina. So I'm philosophically opposed to it, but will defer to the explanations that have been given. If someone could give me a little more detail as to what the county indicated that changed this trajectory of this?
The county indicated that we lost a significant investment opportunity with a business because we didn't offer them an abatement. And I believe it was something around a $40 million facility that would have been built. It may not have been the only factor in their decision, but that's, that's what we were led to believe, that it weighed heavily.
I think I recall having a, a, a one-on-one discussion with, with treasurer Gillette regarding this issue a while back, was, was this in the last six months?
Um, I think it was further, it was maybe the beginning of last summer.
Okay.
Maybe nine months ago.
So we'll be out, missing out on the party if we slam the door shut by way of policy and we can always reconsider and vote no, should we?
That is correct, they still have to come before us. I mean, I, like I said, I, my first instinct was just to tell everybody no, but I, I was convinced to rethink that position.
Called pragmatism.
The point, the point also being made here is we are not starting a policy of granting these abatements, we are amending an existing policy. I don't like either of the policies, but I like this policy better than the existing policy. So I'm voting to move from a 12-year abatement for the, for the, for the big businesses to a nine-year abatement for a more broader array of businesses. Still not exactly perfect, but I don't know if there is exactly perfect in this case. There's two, so many factors that play between what is, again, ethical, what is, what is economical, what is practical. Everyone's got solid points. So this is, in a way of compromising to something I think is better than the existing policy.
Mr. Chairman, are there any verification provisions that they do in fact make the investments and, and do in fact develop the land consistent with their proposal?
Well, the verification would be, you know, the process that went through engineering and planning and we would, you know, participate in that, in that process.
And as far as I know, since the new board's been seated, we haven't, have we voted on any of these?
No.
Are there any?
Pending?
Proposed pending ones?
I think there would be one coming.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that, that's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Guzman. Go ahead, Peter.
Just one question. When I used to hear industrial, I would think machine shops, you know, production, things like that. How does this affect a grow operation moving in and looking for an abatement? Do they fall under the criteria for abatement?
Well, we're opt-out, so a recreational grower can't grow here. Someone were to build a building and house medical marijuana growers, which is the limit of 72 plants, that is possible. I don't think the use is anywhere defined in, in our policy or in the statute as far as I know. So I guess in theory, someone could build a brand-new building and condolize it for a bunch of medical marijuana growers.
And if they bring it before us and maybe we don't want to approve it based on what they're producing, do we fall in any, under any legal problems of maybe like a discrimination because of the type of business or anything like that?
Well, I think this board has set forth a clear policy with regard to marijuana at this point. You're just being consistent with that policy as far as the use, separate and distinct from the industrial facilities exemption. Is there a potential challenge? Sure, everybody with $150 in their pocket could file a lawsuit against us for anything. But at the end of the day, that's why you have before you the right to agree to or deny what's being proposed in the, for the exemption purposes. Is it good for the community, is your overriding issue?
Sure.
I'd also note that there are state guidelines and descriptions of what industrial means. And what it allows for high tech, it allows for manufacturing and so forth. Is agriculture manufacturing, well, it can be, but it's typically not applied that way.
Okay.
We could make that argument, anyway.
All right, there's no more discussion. We have a motion by trustee Oliver, supported by treasurer Gillette, to adopt the resolution to amend the tax abatement standards for plant rehabilitation in industrial districts. Clerk Posey, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Guzman?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. That resolution is adopted. All right, moving on to item 17, is a request to extend the grant writing agreement for Team Rowe. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
So we had an update from our grant writer. Ms. Rowe, was it in December, giving us the, kind of the position where we are with the certain grant applications. One of the things we learned in the process of the last six months while we ran this sort of trial program with her is that a lot of these grant opportunities only come up annually. And a lot of the work she has laid are for opportunities that are still in front of us. So I am proposing we extend her contract another six months so that we can get a full year of these grant windows available to us and see the results again after another six months.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So just have had the opportunity to sit in a number of the meetings that Ms. Rowe has been having with both SEMCOG, Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, with the state MDOT, with our county. And the application process theoretically could be as easily as you go out and fill out application, hand it in, and then wait four months to see what happens. But successful applications require, or SMART successful applications appear to require meeting with the granting agencies' folks numerous times in shaping the application. As you're developing that application, learning what is, meeting with the people who are actually making the decision to find out how they score certain things, what kind of things are less or more likely to be worthy of applying for and that sort of thing. So I, I guess I'm witnessing, maybe Ms. Rowe should call it sow with row, because you're sowing seeds and you don't sow a seed, wait a month and then see the crop has failed. You sow a seed and wait a growing season and see what has been produced. So I think there has been a lot of seeds being sown. And I think that we have an opportunity to produce a good crop in the next few months as a result of these. And we'll see, but I, I, I've been seeing the work going in on the front end.
And actually, before we go much further, Ms. Rowe is joining us remotely. Liz, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, if you can hear me.
Okay, we can. I don't know why it's not coming from that speaker over there. Is there any updates since your, the update you gave to the board last?
Yeah, actually, there are, and I apologize if my voice goes out. I'm still recovering from COVID, so I'm a little, that's why I'm not there in person. Actually, Leon just mentioned SEMCOG and an application that we are working on for tap funding to fund the development of the sidewalk area around the town center. And we had a very successful meeting yesterday with the county road commission, John Crum. And in the process of going through this, and I, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, we have the opportunity to receive a matching grant to, that will match the amount of funding that the township will be providing for this project, which is a project. that the township will be providing for this project, which is approximately $50,000. The county is actually going to match that funding as we apply for the TAP grant. So, it is possible, and Leon could probably, or Treasurer Gillette could probably second this, that those meetings have gone very well so far. John Crum from the County Road Commission is very confident that we're positioning ourselves to have a successful grant application. You know, obviously, there are no guarantees in the world, but I believe that with our, with all the ground that we have laid with that, we could have the potential for having a fully funded project that did not require any additional township dollars. And that's a really fantastic position that you've put yourselves in. The other item that I wanted to bring up is that I've been conversing on email, obviously because I've not been able to be in the office. I've been conversing with the fire chief to discuss a FEMA grant that we're, for recruitment and training. That grant is due next month, so I'll be working with him on that as well. I hope to be back in the office, meeting with folks in person next week. I'm actually getting a PCR test tomorrow, so hopefully that will finally become negative so that I can leave my house.
Thank you, Ms. Rowe. Questions from the board? Anybody want to ask Liz anything, or any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question and a possible amendment. What would be the harm in extending it for three months with an option to renew for another three months, thus forcing a review by this board of the progress on this grant writing?
I think three months is, knowing when some of these windows are, and I guess, Liz, you can speak to this a little bit. We have, as I recall, like the Wilson Grant and a couple of the other ones that we were looking at, applying to. Do you remember when the application deadlines are for some of those that were coming up this spring?
Well, actually, yeah, actually, the TAP grant, I want to use the TAP grant as an illustration. The TAP grant is due next month in February. However, they don't make a decision on that grant until April. And during that window of time between February and April, they actually work with the applicant, which would be us in the county, to somewhat negotiate the terms of that to make it more competitive. So, I mean, obviously, it's a choice that you all have to consider, but to extend it three months when there won't be any outcome, and the announcement of the grant isn't actually done until July, that might cut it really short.
Yeah, I'm afraid that this, we, you know, the lesson that those of us who, you know, weren't familiar with grants have learned is that this is a very long game. Takes a lot of time and energy, and I don't think an additional three months is going to matter a whole lot. And even in 12 months, we will have learned a lot more, and there'll still be a lot of opportunities that she'll be in the middle of pursuing. You know, some of these things take a lot of caressing. So, it's not just filling out the application, it's how you fill it out. Sometimes you learn from a failed application what they want to see, you know, for the next time around, so.
Mr. Chairman, my question is, how do we determine efficacy? How do we determine efficiency? How do we determine? This is $36,000 a year that's being expended with a return thus far, from my reading, of I understand the argument that's being made, and I can appreciate it, because I think that there's a great benefit to the township if the machine starts running and these grant monies start to come into the budget. But I would like a review, so I'd move that there be a presentation as to the status in three months with the term to be six months.
I would support that opportunity to review or update on the status in three months. Am I the original motion maker?
Yes. Clerk Posey is the supporter.
So, we're looking at a update in three months?
Yes.
But with the term being extended six months? I would support that as a friendly amendment if the secondor is willing to.
Might the what?
The second.
The secondor.
Second.
The supporter.
Thinking about it.
The...
I agree.
The sound and rational amendment.
And I would like to comment on it if I, if I may.
And I'm not seconding it.
I'm like, you're not seconding my comment?
You're right.
Well, my comment is, what it really does boil down to is cost-benefit analysis, obviously. I mean, if, after a certain amount of time, if we're not getting grants, then it hasn't worked. It's just what it is. It's just dollars out, dollars in. But I am confident that we are going to more than recover our investment. Could be wrong. Could be wrong. But I'm willing to bet that we are.
Yeah. The idea is, you apply for a whole lot of them, and you get one. If you get one, one pays for itself.
More than covered all the expenses. Yep.
It's a numbers game.
It is. So, on January 12, 2022, Leon Gillette said?
Put it down. Put it down. I'm pretty confident we're going to receive some good benefits from this.
So, the motion is to extend the agreement for another six months with a review from the grant writer in three. Any further discussion?
Could I just make one?
Yep.
Could I just make one more comment?
You can.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to thank the trustee Kuzmato for being a very good advocate for my tax dollars. I am a resident here, and I do appreciate your concern. I agree with Leon that, obviously, playing the long game is the way to go, but I do appreciate it, and I look forward to providing you an update in three months.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, point of privilege. Thank you for the kind words. I'm virtually hugging you now.
Very huggy today.
Anyone who's interested in saving tax dollars, I'm an advocate for, and I, hopefully, we can get the ball rolling and the pump primed. Thank you, madam. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Being at the college with Kathy Lorenzo.
If there's no more discussion?
Just one question.
Oh, there is.
If I could.
Way to go, Pete.
The $75,000 that's pending, that is the one that she said is due next month, or that just hasn't been rejected yet?
Liz, can you comment?
Those are, that's actually two grants that have been applied for, and we have not received word. We won't receive word on the award of those until May. They're both from the Community Foundation for Southeast Michigan. One is for $50,000, and that would actually cover our matching funds needed for the TAP grant. It's through the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation. I actually had a really successful meeting, Zoom meeting, with the, oh, the grant administrator of that last week, where I discussed the program and the plans. And then the other one is also a Ralph C. Wilson grant to help fund the buildout of the tennis courts at Pittsford Park. And that one is for $25,000.
Okay.
So, that's counted in the six that have been applied for.
Liz, the TAP grant overall, was that 400 or 450 total?
It's 400 from TAP, and then 50/50 from the county and the township.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's no more questions? There's a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to extend the grant writing agreement for a six-month term with a review in three. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay. Back onto public comment. If anybody has anything they wish to say, please approach the microphone on the right hand side of the room. If there's anybody participating virtually who wishes to speak, please digitally raise your hand. Nobody present? Anybody online? Nope. Since there's no public comments, we'll move on. Onto board comments. Trustee Lucido?
Nothing for me tonight.
Disappointing. Trustee Nevers?
I have no other comments. No comments tonight. Thank you.
Okay, trustee Oliver, you had time to think about it this time.
Okay. I did have some thoughts. One, I want to thank whoever got involved in the, in the county, it sounds like, with the tax abatement. That's been a big issue. It's, 12 years always could have bugged me a little bit, too. And the old one was pretty complicated. And I just want to congratulate Ms. Rowe for another six months, and hope that it all comes through. And that's it.
Thank you. Trustee Kuzmato?
I have a little bit more of a comment, somewhat of a small little speech, but I want the residents to know that this board is actively pursuing third-party contracts, including for EMS, and trying to drive as hard a bargain as possible. These third-party contracts are significant. They include waste removal, police, and of course, Great Lakes Water Authority for our water supply, which is making a presentation about the proposed increases. I submitted 35 questions. Now, the tough part. I started this with, "I believe in America," but I also, I've crossed that out. "I've sworn an oath to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Michigan. I believe in fair and free elections run by elected government officials. If I or any other candidate is declared to lose an election, then that person or ballot initiative proponent seeks redress in the courts. If the courts deny relief, then that is it. You accept the defeat, you regroup, and make your case again the next cycle. I'm opposed to any efforts to undermine the legitimacy of our elections and the unfounded conspiracy theories surrounding them. I have consistently resisted attempts to undermine the legitimacy of the court. It is my career to uphold the law and the rule of law. As I said last December on the steps of Town Hall at the Santa Cruz, there was a misguided effort that could only lead to an authoritarian state. How would you like to be on the other side of that?" Is what my question was. "As many in the baby boom generation have grew up watching television shows about Hitler and Mussolini and the Japanese Emperor Hirohito. How did that occur? How could that possibly occur in modern civilized nations? Well, here we are. You and your family can be victimized if the rule of law is abandoned or diminished." This is not easy for me to say, because I'm supposedly going to alienate a certain segment of the electorate. Of course, it's hard, but nothing in life of value is easy, and at least, at least not for most of us. "We pledge allegiance to the flag, but we have to really hold tight to our constitution. And it's our most valuable asset and protects us all. We have a duty to uphold. And as Forrest Gump would say, that's all I have to say about that. Thank you."
Thank you, trustee Kuzmato. I appreciate your sentiment. Treasurer Gillette?
Nothing.
Nobody wants to follow that. You said everything, Frank. How can we follow that? Go ahead, clerk Posey.
I would just like to add to a bit of what trustee Kuzmato mentioned. There was an article in the Macomb Daily that indicated that Macomb County Clerk did conclude its audit, and there was, it was, the result was, there was no interference with the election results. So, I was 1,000% confident that would be the result, and I stand behind that continuously. And I'm happy that it was finally published, and we can put that to bed. That's all I have to say.
Amen. Thank you. Couple of minor things. Just to remind everybody, the township offices will be closed on January 17 in observance of Martin Luther King Day. We also have a number of open positions in the township, so I encourage everyone to check our website. Please share it with your friends and family, for anyone who might be interested in position with the township. Positions include our community relations liaison, DPW director. What else have we got open?
I was thinking of other things.
Oh, we have some other positions in the water and sewer department, and I know we have a great need for lifeguards and people for the Parks and Rec Department as well, so please take the opportunity to take a look. That being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Support.
Any discussion? Motion by clerk Posey, supported by trustee Kuzmato, to adjourn the meeting. Members, please vote. What time are we adjourned? Motion passes seven to zero. This meeting is adjourned.